We do the next year's budget. So at the same time that the board approved the 2526 budget, they were also approving the 2425 estimated actuals. And that's the last time that the finance team, the budget department, the accounting department, all of the finance teams working together, that's the last time in the year that we're forecasting how we're going to end. Then during the summer months, the finance departments close the books. So they they close off the year. They make sure all invoices are paid. They they accrue expenditures. They accrue revenue. They do all sorts of accounting things. And that brings us to unaudited actuals. That's the final product. After they close the books, the numbers are no longer a forecast. It's real. We have our unaudited actuals. And the reason we call them unaudited actuals is because right after this, our auditors come in and they essentially validate all of the numbers. And then we we have our external auditors then come and present to the board in December. So that's the budget cycle. So and you've been with it with us for every step of that budget cycle from all the way back from from budget approval through the interims, through through estimated actuals, and then and finally through for unaudited actuals. So the habit that we've gotten into is we're starting with the end. We're starting with the ending fund balance. And well, once we go through that, then we're gonna we're gonna talk about how we got here. So the ending fund balance for the 2425 year is $216.7 million. That's that that's that figure immediately to the left of the red line. And then everything to the right of the red line is a forecast for the current year. Now, it's important to note that when we have unaudited actuals, there might be things about the 2526 budget that we know have changed. We may know that, like, for example, enrollment is down. Okay? But we can't make any changes in the 2526 budget or even the 2627 or 2728. We're simply not allowed to. All we're allowed to do is report out the unaudited actuals, twenty, the final numbers for 25 for 2425. And of course, that's going to result in a change in fund balance. And that change in fund balance carries forward. But we're not changing any of the budget numbers for the current year or in the multi-year projection. So referring back to 2425, we ended the year about 13 million and change, a little bit more than 13 million more than what we had planned at estimated actuals. That so that's a change of about one and a quarter, one and a half percent, which is really good. And I talked about the finance teams. I talked about the budget department, the accounting department, and, you know, what they're what they did during estimated actuals. So they they get props because the idea of the numbers only changing about one and a quarter, one and a half percent, that's pretty solid forecasting. And and it speaks to all of the efforts that go into all of all of those projections. So I'm very grateful to those finance departments for the work that they did during the close as well as the work they did at estimated actuals for a really solid forecast. Continuing with the numbers I mentioned, we're gonna we we finished at $216.7 million. We are forecasting to finish this year at 158.2, next year at 108.7, and then the final year in the multi-year projection at $83.2 million. Now, you've heard me say this before, but it's definitely worth mentioning. We can't talk about fund balance as if it's one big pot of money. There's actually lots of pots of money. And there's two major categories which are restricted and unrestricted. The unrestricted here shown in blue, that's the the band on the bottom, and then the restricted is in red. The pattern that you see here is the unrestricted funds are shrinking through throughout the years at a much faster rate than the restricted. And there's lots of reasons for that. It it has to do with it has to do in in large part with all of the restricted money that we received as COVID relief grant funds. It also has to do with the fact that we we have general fund contributions to special education, general fund contributions to maintenance. There's there's lots of things that go into this. But it's really important to point this out because as the restricted as the unrestricted funds get smaller and smaller, that's what we're measured on. Our financial health is measured by the state. And it's measured by the county office of education. We're we're measured on what our unrestricted funds are. And that is why last year, the board approved a core resolution. That was a very important strategy in in managing this because what that core resolution does is it essentially re-benches. It it reestablishes what is our base? What is our core? And allows us flexibility in our restricted funds to give us the ability to continue to provide student supports. As as long as we have good financial health and we could sustain those supports. And that's the last point I want to make on fund balance. A lot of times people talk about fund balance and they say, well, the district is hoarding money or the district's just, you know, is putting putting money in the bank for no reason. And that's just not true. Fund balance is a very important part of making sure that we have the continued ability to support our students. So the way that I always like to look at it is what we have in fund balance is a measure so that our board and and staff can make informed decisions regarding how much money to invest in the current year for the current students versus making sure that we have enough money in future years to continue to invest in future students. That's the that's the importance there. That's that's all this is. So everything that the finance department does, all of these efforts, in large part, it's to help the board make informed decisions about what can we afford to do this year in order to provide needed supports while still making sure that we have enough money next year and the year after and the year after? Because remember, we need to do a three-year budget. How much money do we need in fund balance in order to continue to provide those supports? All right, let's dive into the numbers. We're gonna start with the revenue. And this is the same format slide that we've used in the past. And you'll you'll see the same format when we get to expenditures. We're looking at two variances here. The first variance is what was the change between estimated actuals and unaudited actuals? And you see that with that blue arrow. And you also see the percentage in that column that's blue shaded. Then we're also looking at what is the variance between the final numbers in 2425 and what we're projecting for the current year, 2526? That is the red arrow and the percentage is in the red shaded column. So looking at revenue, starting with LCFF, Local Control Funding Formula, that's that's our primary source of of revenue. You'll see very little change from estimated to unaudited actuals and about a 1% decrease going into the current year. And that decrease, and you've heard me say this before, is due to declining enrollment and the fact that the COLA, the cost of living adjustment, just is not sufficient to make up for the decline in enrollment and the corresponding decrease in revenue related to declining enrollment. On federal revenue, you see about a seven and a half percent decrease in of in both columns from estimated to unaudited and from 2425 to 2526. And that is a result of, and you've heard me say this before, the the federal revenue. So we have to report federal revenue in the year that we spend it. It's this it's this weird reporting requirement. So as we complete spending down all of the COVID relief grant funds, that corresponds to the decrease in revenue that you're seeing there. On other state revenue, you see just an incremental increase. But that's a little bit misleading. And so when you look at other state, you see two line items here. We have block grants and something called STIRS on behalf of adjustment. And let me just talk about this really quickly. So on the the block grants, so in addition to the federal COVID relief grant money, we also got state COVID relief grant funds. We we got basically two block grants. And we are getting close to to spending those down. So that's why you see that. So there is a decrease from estimated to unaudited related to 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 those funds. But that is offset by an increase on the STIRS on behalf of adjustment. And let me just tell you what the STIRS on behalf of adjustment is. The state makes contributions to STIRS, which is the retirement plan for certificated employees, teachers, counselors, nurses, et cetera. And we are required to report those contributions. And we report it twice, first as a revenue line item and then as an expenditure line item. So that's what you're seeing here. So that 0.5% increase is actually a combination of a decrease on on block grants and an increase related to the STIRS on behalf of adjustment. Going into next year, you see that pretty significant 16.2% decrease in other state revenue. And that is related to those block grants that I just mentioned. We're we are getting less money from the state. The COVID relief grant funds are running out. And finally, on the slide, let's talk about local revenue. So on local revenue, we have that 19.1% decrease from estimated to unaudited actuals. So from 44.4 to 50, almost 53 million. That is related to Medical billing and something called fair value investment. So on Medical billing, and you've heard me say this before, we we know we're going to get reimbursements. We know we we know that when we submit Medical billing reimbursements, we're going to get that money. But we have no control over the timeline of receiving it. So because of that, we don't actually book it until we receive it. So it's it's not in our projections because we really don't know what year it's going to hit. So so that is one reason we did get some Medical reimbursements that we weren't sure we were going to get. And so that's booked here. The the other thing that changed that number is something called fair value investment. And that's another reporting requirement. And it's it is a strange one, but it is something that we have to do. So every year, the Orange County Department of Education and along with input from actuaries and economists basically give us a number. And they say, this is the fair value of the funds that you have in county treasury. So what we have in fund balance is sitting in a county treasury. And logic dictates that what we should be reporting is just how much interest are we earning? That's the local revenue. That's that's, you know, up until like five years ago, that's all we reported. But there's a relatively new reporting requirement that makes us report basically what the fair value is of those funds if invested according to how the economists say they should be invested. So if interest rates are on their way up, then what happens is we are reporting an increase in fair value investment. If interest rates are on their way down, then we're reporting a decrease. And as weird as that is, and this happened to me about three or four years ago, we actually reported negative local revenue. So as weird as that is, we reported negative local revenue because interest rates were on their way down. And that's what we're that's what we were required to report. So that's it for for revenue. I know that you you have some questions, question cards on your tables. Has anybody completed any of those question cards?
If you don't have a question card, Lorena?
Yeah, so we're we're almost
Lorena in the back can give you a card if you don't have a question card at your table. And we'll be collecting those as Mr. Hacker said and doing our best to respond to as many as we can here. But we're also going to collect them and answer them and provide them on our various platforms going forward.
Right. And I'm just giving you a little bit of warning because we've got a couple more slides on revenue. And then I think after we finish revenue is a good time to break for the first round of questions. So looking at revenue across the multi-year, you see that it's very flat. And and this is concerning because we know that expenditures are not going to be flat. But the revenue is very flat. LCFF, which is, of course, the primary source of our revenue, you could see just a very, over the course of the multi-year, it is just an incremental increase. And in fact, if you compare 2425 to the end of our multi-year, you actually see that it went down from 588.9 to 583.1 million. So it it's flat. In fact, it's it's actually trending down a little bit. And that is once again because of declining enrollment. Looking at federal revenue, we we definitely have a decrease going into the current year. And that's for those because of the COVID relief grant funds that I talked about. And we've kept it flat. Now, remember how I how I talked about that we're not allowed to make changes in unaudited actuals for related to the current year or the next year? What do you guys think is going to be happening over the next few years to our federal revenue, to our title funds? Does anybody think they're going to be going up? Raise your hand if you think they're going to be going up. Raise your hand if you think they're going to be going down. Yeah. And that's because of what's happening on the national scene. And even though the federal government has not passed a budget or even passed a continuing spending resolution, they have signaled that they're going to reduce the titles. And so we know that. It's not reflected here because we can't make changes. So that it's important to to keep that in mind. Even though we're reporting that this purple line is flat, we know it's going to go down. On the green band, which is other state revenue, it's also going down a little bit. That's because those those state COVID relief grant funds, those block grants are also going away. And finally, on local revenue, it's it's constant. But we know with Medical reimbursements and with the fair value investment, those may go up in the future years. And the final slide related to revenue, and we always do this because it's just so important to point out that our primary source of revenue, our bread and butter, is LCFF, Local Control Funding Formula, which is based on how many students we have, what the attendance is, what our unduplicated pupil count is. That's our primary source of revenue, 70%. And that's going to continue to go up in future years. That federal revenue, if you if you look at the slide five years ago, that purple or four years ago, that purple slide was much bigger because we had so much more federal revenue. Other state is still significant right now because of the existing block grants. And other local is is somewhat consistent at at 6%. So before we go to expenditures, have we collected any cards? And maybe we could we could
Does anyone have a card with a question?
It's in Spanish, but so I'll say it in Spanish and then I'll repeat it in English. If that's okay.
Adelante.
Que hace el distrito para motivar a la comunidad a quedarse en el ciclo escolar escolar? Anterior se dijo lo mismo sobre la matrícula. What has the district done to motivate the community to stay with us during the school year? And last year, we said the same thing about enrollment. What have we done to motivate the community to stay with us?
I mean, there's lots of others. So it's it's important to note that and I'll talk about Orange County. There is only one district in Orange County that does not have declining enrollment. And that's Irvine. And that's related that's related to nothing other than development. The harsh reality that we we need to face, we cannot bury our head in the sand. The two biggest causes of declining enrollment are declining birth rates and economic pressures of living in Santa Ana. I'm gonna say those again. For declining enrollment, let me cover them one at a time. For declining enrollment, the primary cause of that is declining birth rates. So we see that across the state. Everywhere across the state, there's declining birth rates. And if you look at the percentages of the decline in birth rates and you fast forward a few years to when those students enter schools, it's really close. So without question, the primary cause of declining enrollments is declining birth rates. We we cannot fix that. Okay? The the second biggest cause is the the economic pressures of of living in Santa Ana. So let's let's look at what's happening. So let's, when we look to the south, when we look to the west, we see those cities, we see Irvine, we see Costa Mesa with lots of development, right? Okay? That increases property values on the periphery of Santa Ana and basically pushes northward. And this is not a phenomenon that is is limited to Santa Ana. I spent the the majority of my career as a CBO at Centinela Valley, which is in Lawndale and Hawthorne. So that's just south of Valley X. And we were seeing the same thing. So there, from the south, it was Manhattan Beach, all of the beach cities. And all of the development in the beach cities was then basically creating economic pressures moving north. Let's look north of us, okay? And 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 east. So what's happening in Tustin? What's happening in Garden Grove? What's happening in Orange? It's the same thing. We see lots of development. We see the cost of housing going up. And that creates economic pressures moving south. And we saw the same thing in Centinela. In that particular case, it was the cities north of Hawthorne. It it was a rail line coming through, the Crenshaw line coming through, which basically sparked a whole bunch of development and created these economic pressures. There is a severe housing shortage throughout the state, particularly in Santa Ana. That makes rent high. It makes mortgages high. And it makes it very difficult for our families to be here. And finally, we have the most recent impact of we have the most the other reason for declining enrollment, which is unfortunately what's happening on the federal level and all of the ICE enforcement. And because of that, we have seen further declines in enrollment that are explained by nothing other than that. Now, am I saying that everything is out of our control? No. I mean, certainly, and you've heard Dr. Perez talk about the importance of focusing on academics and driving achievement and and meeting the needs of our families. There is app, we absolutely need to do that. That is not something that could be turned around overnight. In in a school district this size, that is not something that can be turned around overnight. But there are serious efforts. And if you're watching the board meetings, you're seeing that renewed and and growing focus on academics. At next week's meeting, you're gonna hear Dr. Perez talk about that. It is going to be a constant topic in board meetings. So that is that is what we're doing. I I understand the comment. This is what you talked about last year. It's just important to note that most of what's happening is out of our control.
Thank you. And then there was a second part to that question. It was in regards to we've lost a lot of special education staff. What are we doing to make sure that with lack of personnel, we aren't limiting the services to our students?
So so when you say we've lost a lot of special education staff,
The department, from the department, I think.
So are we talking school sites or are we talking?
Both.
Okay. So so as part of the reduction in force, there were no special education teachers affected by that. That was not that was not a position that was part of the reduction in force. However, we also had the supplemental early retirement plan. And we definitely lost some special education teachers as part of that. My understanding is that most most of those positions have been filled since that time. So the district has hired new teachers to to backfill those assignments. So I don't believe that we've lost. I mean, I know we've lost people, we've lost veteran teachers. But in terms of the number of teachers, I I don't believe that we've we've had a net loss.
So we've been able to replace those positions. And the schools filling those positions versus district positions has been the first priority too. I've heard HR say that as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. And the next question is, can you elaborate or explain what LCFF sources and how they make these $588,892,406,000 to the point? Or or 70% of the funds that we have?
So I don't I don't think I
Can you elaborate or explain LCFF?
What is LCFF?
Yes.
Okay, so LCFF stands for Local Control Funding Formula. And it's about, it's more than 10 years old now. So about a decade ago, the state changed the the primary way that we are funded. So it used to be called Revenue Limit. And there were a whole bunch of formulas. And there were a whole bunch of block grants and all that changed. And they they created LCFF at the same time that they created LCAP, Local Control Accountability Plan. So the idea was that on LCFF, you have base funding. So every school district in California gets a certain amount per ADA, per average daily attendance. And there's a rate for for different grade span. So a first grader, we're we're getting a different amount of money for a first grader than we are for an eighth grader than we are for a 10th grader, just by way of example. So that's base funding. So every every school district in California gets that same amount. But then we have what's called supplemental and and concentration funds. And we get additional money. We get an additional amount per ADA for our students who are part of our unduplicated pupil count. And unduplicated pupils include students from low-income households, English language learners, foster youth, and McKinney-Vento students. So students who are experiencing some some issue with being unhoused or or having to to share living quarters. So we get additional money for each of those student groups. And the idea is that we need to spend those additional funds supporting those same student groups. So we're going to spend the supplemental and concentration funds on students who are economically disadvantaged, on students who are English language learners, on students who are foster youth and who are experiencing some sort of housing shortage. What goes into calculating LCFF? And by the way, we're going to do a deep dive of this at the second October meeting. There are some people who don't even know that yet. But we're we we decided that we're going because we have that very severe decline in enrollment, further decline related to ICE and everything, we thought it was important to update the board. So we're going to be doing a detailed presentation at the October board meeting that goes into everything related to LCFF. But let me continue. So LCFF is based on ADA. So how many students are attending? But it's a little bit more complicated because there's a hold harmless. And for a district that's in declining enrollment, we are actually funded on the average of the three prior years of ADA. Okay? In addition to how many students are in attendance, the other factor that 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 determines LCFF is our unduplicated pupil count or unduplicated pupil percentage. So making sure that we're properly identifying the foster youth, the McKinney-Vento students, the English language learners, and finally, our low-income households. That's really, really important. And we put a lot of work into that. So we we do direct certification efforts, comparing our database to databases from Orange County Social Services Agency, comparing it to a database, a state database, basically matching students who are receiving any form of public assistance. And we directly certify them as low income. On top of that, I think many of you know that we did a Sunbucks application distribution to make sure that our families can access the the Sunbucks benefit. And if they haven't already mailed out, soon will be mailed out one last application to help us determine which households are low-income households. And we go through all of these efforts. And we go through all of these efforts to make sure that our unduplicated pupil percentage is as high as possible. We're not going to over-report it, of course, we're going to accurately report it, but we want to make sure we're identifying our low-income households so that we get that additional supplemental and concentration grant funding in order to provide the extra needed supports. So why don't we...
Do you want to continue?
I think we need to continue because otherwise we're going to run out of time. Yeah, we're about, yeah, almost halfway through.
And those of you who submitted questions, we'll get to them.
Yeah, we'll do some more questions after we get through expenditures and then some final questions after that. All right, so turning to the expenditure side of the books, starting with salaries and benefits, and it's those same blue and red arrows. Looking at certificated salaries and classified salaries, you see very little change between estimated and unaudited actuals. And that goes back once again to that incredible work that the finance teams did during estimated actuals to really, really accurately forecast where we were on salaries and benefits. However, going into the current year, you see that big 13.6% decrease in certificated salaries. That's directly related to the reduction in force and the supplemental early retirement plan that we offered. Both of those resulted in a decrease in positions. So that is why you see that significant decrease. On classified salaries going into the current year, you see just an incremental increase. And that has to do with a whole bunch of things. So step in column, so as employees get more seniority, there's incremental increases in their salaries. But at the same time, that number reflects kind of a freeze, not a freeze, that's the wrong word. It reflects basically strategic evaluation whenever there's a vacancy. So whenever there's a vacancy on the classified side, we're really evaluating, do we need to fill that position and do we need to fill it right now? On employee benefits, you do see a decrease going from estimated to unaudited. And that's two things, multiple times today, we've talked about two things that are competing against one another, one driving a number up, one driving a number down. That's what happened here. So on employee benefits, we did have a reduction related to OPEB. So evaluating out what our retiree obligations are, we had a downward adjustment based on an OPEB analysis. And at the same time, we had an increase related to that STIRS on behalf of adjustment that I spoke about before. So those two things competed and resulted in a net decrease of 2.8%. Going into the current year, you see that decrease of 14.8%. That, for the most part, is directly related to the reduction in certificated positions. So whenever you have a reduction in salaries, because there are statutory benefits and retirement contributions and health and welfare, you're going to see a corresponding decrease in employee benefits. Looking at salaries and benefits across the multi-year, what you see on certificated salaries is some incremental decrease going into next year, and then a more significant decrease going into '27, '28. Now, I don't want anyone thinking that this is a planned reduction in force or a planned SERP. There are no plans for either of those. What there are plans are for, though, is making sure that our staffing is right-sized, that we have the proper number of employees related to enrollment. So as we go into next year and the year after, we're going to evaluate what we need, and we're going to be strategic in filling vacancies. A lot of the teachers that were hired this year were hired on temporary contracts. And we did that so that we have the flexibility to evaluate as we're transitioning from '25, '26 to '26, '27, we have the ability to evaluate whether we need to continue having those teachers. So that's not a layoff. It's just making sure that we're right-sized on staffing. On classified, you see a somewhat similar pattern, not as pronounced, though, but we're doing the same thing. We're evaluating every vacancy and determining whether or not we need to fill that position and fill it now. And we're making strategic decisions, and we're doing all of that to avoid draconian, really serious cuts in the future years. The more strategic we are this year and next year and the year after, the more we protect our ability to continue to provide needed support to our students. And finally, on benefits, you don't see that same pattern on benefits. And the reason is there's, well, indeed, there will be some reductions on statutory benefits and on health and welfare. At the same time, we have increases in the PERS contribution rates, and we have increases in health and welfare. So because of that, we don't see reductions on benefits. Looking at supplies, services, and capital. On the supply line, you see a pretty significant decrease between estimated and unaudited actuals. That is a result of a number of deliveries that we were hoping to receive before the end of June on technology, on instructional materials, and other supplies. And those deliveries did not materialize for a number of reasons. So because of that, we had to reduce that number down because the expenditures were indeed lower. Going into the current year, you see it's a return to that, you know, basically where we were. And once again, we're not really allowed to make changes on the current year budget. But we do know that a lot of those deliveries that didn't make it last year hit this year. So we're going to keep our eye on supplies as we get through the interims. On services, a very incremental increase going in between estimated and unaudited. But it's really, what I want to focus on here is that 24.3% decrease on services going into next year, going into the current year, rather. And that is that strong attention to fiscal stabilization. So we're reviewing every membership, every piece of software that we use, every consultant that we use. Every single one of those expenditures are being reviewed, in most cases, by a cabinet-level person to make sure that we're being as strategic as possible on our services. Because that area, which you could see, is a big part of our budget. That's probably the biggest opportunity for us to be strategic. On capital, you see a somewhat significant increase between estimated and unaudited actuals. And that is a result of some facilities projects that were completed in the month of June that we weren't sure were going to be completed in the month of June. But because they were, we definitely have to book those expenditures. And those were projects that were funded by ELOP, and you've heard me talk about ELOP a lot. But they were also funded by another source called KIT, which is Kitchen Infrastructure and Training Grant, and that's a nutrition services grant. But it's not part of the nutrition services budget. It's actually part of the general fund, which is why you see it here. Going into the current year, you see that massive decrease of 96.1%. That is nothing short of an almost absolute freeze on capital purchases and capital projects. This is a big part of our fiscal stabilization efforts. So we stopped all furniture purchases, and we just budgeted a little bit, about $1.6 million for things that are absolutely necessary. So if we have vehicles that fail, we need to replace those vehicles, those are some of the things that we're spending capital funds on this year. But for the most part, it's a freeze. Now, going into the multi-year, what you're seeing on the supply line, that blue line at the bottom, is you definitely see some decreases in the out-years of the multi-year. And that's, once again, part of our strategic fiscal stabilization efforts, evaluating all of those purchases to make sure that we are maintaining minimum required reserves and making sure that we have the ability to continue to support students in the future years. On services, same pattern. You see reductions in the out-years to make sure, I mean, so we're, once again, we're evaluating all of that software and memberships and consultants to make sure that we can sustain student support into the future years. Now, you do not see that pattern, that same pattern on capital. So what you see on capital, we talked about a freeze this year. But, and as much as I would love to freeze everything for three years, that's just not possible. We're going to need to buy vehicles. We're going to need to make other capital investments. So next year, there is a restoration of some capital funds. But then going into '27, '28, once again, there's pretty much a freeze. And that's, once again, all part of our fiscal stabilization efforts. Looking at expenditures as a whole, and this is a really important slide. When you look at all of the expenditures, 81% of them are on people. So 35% of all expenditures are for certificated staff. And these are last year's numbers, and that's certificated non-management. 15% goes to classified non-management, 5% to management salaries, and then 26% goes to benefits. So the vast majority of the budget is on our people. So why don't we take another short break for another few questions, hopefully related to expenditures?
Well, we have people, well, they are related to expenditures, but they're also related to revenues.
Okay.
And one of them is, as revenue goes down, how does this directly affect student learning? And I don't know if any of our staff, it's Celeste, will come up, and she'll be able to speak to this a little bit, if that's okay? Sorry, do you want us to wait here?
So one of the, Mr. Hacker was explaining about, you know, purchases and contracts and whatnot. We, in COVID, had extra funding, and so we purchased a lot of supplemental materials. I'll give you an example. We went through a science adoption just recently, elementary, middle, and high school. So one of the things that we will not do is now purchase supplemental materials. We had those materials because we didn't have a current adoption. And so our current adoption replaces what we were purchasing in the past. So our students are not going to lose out on anything because we've purchased over a long period of time versus it just being, you know, just, we used to purchase as software licenses, for instance, virtual labs. Now our science adoption actually includes that.
Okay. And then they also just wanted to know, and I'm going to just state it as a statement, no large classes overcrowding in classes, is it causing that currently? Yeah, sorry.
The short answer is no.
Okay, thank you. And then are we getting as many newcomers as we have in previous years? Alex Nadelko, how is our newcomer enrollment? Because I think this was a question that was tied to revenues.
Hi, good morning Buenos dias. Our numbers of newcomers for the current year, currently, we have, we currently, we have newly enrolled this year about 100 newcomers, which is a little bit lower than we have typically. Just a reminder, when we say newcomers, we're referring to any student that was born outside of the United States and has been in US schools for three years or less. And obviously, because of recent immigration policies, we're seeing our numbers of newcomers kind of flatten out.
And then the last, I think people have mainly given suggestions about safety and other things. And there was just a question about funds like Title I funds, and how is that affecting our English learners' programs? So that was a question that was written on a card.
Sorry, can you read the question to me one more time?
The question is, with Title I funds, are they being impacted? And how is that affecting our English learners?
So just a point of clarification. Title I funds are for all of our students, all of our schools are Title I, and they all receive Title I funds. Title I funds are not specifically for English learners. But Title I and Title III fall into a category of federally-funded programs, and currently, they have not been affected. They're, like Mr. Hacker said, there's been some signals that possibly those could be affected in future years. But for this year currently, they are not affected, fingers crossed.
And then this one, I think, goes back to you, because this one is also about revenues and expenditures and funding. What type of services does the district bill to Medi-Cal? And then how can a parent or families find out what services are being billed to their student?
So for the most part, the Medi-Cal reimbursements are related to mental health. And I don't have at my fingertips a comprehensive list of everything. And that second question, I honestly don't know the answer to.
Okay, okay. We're going to have to get the answer to that question. And regarding, when you're saying that there's going to be reductions to benefits of, well, but is it of well-being, that's what they're in reference to? They just need clarification on what you mean by reduction in benefits?
So when we're talking about benefits, and I'll go back to that slide. So benefits, what we're talking about there are called employee benefits. So if that's the question, when we're talking about employee benefits, what we're talking about are statutory deductions related to, the various, not the various taxes, but like OAS Day, disability, things like that. It's referring to STIRS and PERS contributions, and it's referring to health and welfare benefits. That's what we're talking about when we're talking about employee benefits.
And that's like the insurance that staff has. It's not benefits, like something that's going to benefit me or us, like in that term. It's just that it's referred to as benefits for insurance of staff.
Yep.
Thank you. Why do we have an $8 million difference between the '24, '25 versus '25, '26 if there's less enrollment and, as explained, there was less purchases of materials, supplementary materials, or expenditures? I think that's what that last one is.
So on what line item are we talking about an $8 million difference?
$8 million difference, line item.
Which line item?
On page, on the slide with the bar graph?
Okay, so the question is, and I'll go back to that slide. So on the multi-years on supplies, there's an increase from $23.3 to $30.7 million. I want to go back to two points that I made before. First of all, on '25, '26, '26, '27, '27, '28, we're not allowed to make changes even if we know something is different. We can't make those changes until first interim. The other point that I want to make is, the '24, '25 number should have been closer to $30 million. But there were delays in technology deliveries. There were delays in instructional materials deliveries for a number of reasons that caused those deliveries to occur after June 30th. If a delivery occurs after June 30th, we can't include it in the '24, '25 numbers. So the short answer to the question is, the '24, '25 number should have been closer to 30, but because of those delays in transport and a number of things that caused those deliveries to not hit, that's why that number went down. The 30.7 number is locked and won't be calculated again until first interim.
Another question that has to do with expenditures. On top of the already, like, maintenance of buildings and infrastructure, what construction projects do we have planned for students that will help to accommodate for students with disabilities?
So, okay, so every project that we do, regardless of whether it's a really big project, and so we're in the midst of planning some big projects, or a smaller project where we're doing a modernization, or even if we're looking at redoing asphalt. Most of those projects require a review by Division of State Architect. And as part of that review, we're going to have to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students with disabilities, just to make sure that we have proper access to buildings, to sites, and things like that. We're always going to make sure on a project like that that the project is going to meet the needs of our general education students and special... that the project is gonna meet the needs of our general education students and special education students with properly sized classrooms and with the equipment in those classrooms to meet those needs. I hope that answers the question.
And helping to make those, oh, he's also talking about beds. Like if a child, a child were to need like a hospital bed or making it more inclusive of students with severe medical needs?
And, and that's, so that's what I meant by equipment. So making sure that, and so we can certainly, without a construction project, purchase equipment. But when we're designing spaces, we're, we're going to take into account what those spaces need to accomplish. So if there's a need for hospital beds and, and other pieces of equipment in a space, we're gonna make sure that we design that accordingly.
And then the last one that I think had to do with expenditures specifically was, compare for me the dollars that go to upper level staff, and I think that's like district officer management, versus those going to students learning, reading, writing, and math.
So, so the question is, what are the expenditures related to management?
Management, yes.
Versus the expenditures related to everything else? So let me just go back to this slide here. So 5% of the budget goes to management salaries. And essentially, I mean, there's, and there's some benefits for management, but relatively small. But essentially, probably 93, 94% of our budget goes to things other than management. And that includes our certified staff that directly serve our students, our classified staff, which also directly serve our students, as well as the services that, that we engage, the supplies that we purchase, and the capital investments that we make. So the vast, vast majority of the budget is not management.
And if deliveries are too late, weren't payments already submitted? Is there no need to spend more for more of these materials that were late? Or ready to be used for the next school year? Then why are we taking the money from 25, 26?
We're, we're not, it's just a reporting requirement. We're, we are not, from an accounting standpoint, we are not allowed to book as 24, 25 expenditures something that was not received in 24, 25. So if, if it's a, it doesn't matter if it's a service, or if it's a supply, or, or if it's a capital purchase. If, if we don't receive it by the end of the fiscal year, we can't book it in that fiscal year. It just, we're just not allowed to. If we receive it, but we don't have the invoice yet, that's different. We can accrue the expenditure into the next year, but that's only on things that are, were, were received.
And I know as a school principal, whenever we had to submit all of our orders, we had to ensure that they were gonna arrive by June 30th to make sure that the money was spent. If not, we were always thinking like, oh, we might lose the money, or it might carry over into the next year. But everything had to be received, or all those services had to be provided before June 30th. If not, it would go into the next year, if we got them after that point. So we were always very careful that by June 30th, we knew we were gonna get the computers, we're gonna get the books, so it wouldn't come out of next year's budget. Okay?
So I think I'll push forward, depending on how much time. Maybe we can take a few more questions, and then we'll do our breakout.
Breakouts, okay.
So we finished expenditures. Now let's look at expenditures and revenue together. And I always call this slide the story of COVID. And if you look at the revenue line, which is green, and the purple line, which is expenditures, prior to the pandemic, you see that they're, they're, they're close. We had a relatively balanced budget. Once the pandemic hit, and we started to receive those federal and state pandemic relief grant funds, you start to see the, the green line outpacing the purple line. So we were getting way more revenue than we were spending, and that was by design. So both the federal government and the state government said, here, here are a lot of funds that you can use to support your students, first in distance learning, distance learning, and then later in, in returning to the classroom. So what you see for three straight years is that, that revenue is outpacing expenditures by a lot. Then, starting in 23, 24, when the funds were no longer flowing, but we were still spending the money on students, that's when you see expenditures start to outpace revenue. That's the first year, expenditures outpace revenue, and that's the first year that we had deficit spending, 23, 24. Then 24, 25, the deficit was more pronounced as we, once again, continued spending, but those COVID relief grant funds were basically gone. And that deficit is gonna continue through the current year and through the out years of the, the multi-year projection, but nowhere nearly as pronounced due to all the efforts related to fiscal stabilization. Coming back to ending fund balance, this is the same slide that we showed at the beginning. But I do wanna highlight now the difference between estimated and unaudited actuals. So I did tell you that it was about 13 million and change more. And so that's why you see the blue line, which is our unaudited actuals line, slightly higher than where we were on estimated actuals through the entire multi-year projection. Once again, I wanna highlight the fact that not all of the ending fund balance is unrestricted. In fact, of 24, 25, only 35% is unrestricted. While of the restricted side, we've, ELOP is about 12%. Our two block grants that are, that were active in 24, 25 represent 14% of our ending fund balance. Other restricted funds, which include our titles and, and other grants, 31%. And then our unspendable components are 8%. And that includes our reserve for economic uncertainty, inventory, and, and other components. So I now wanna turn our attention away from general fund and, and talk about some of the other funds. And we, we typically only do this slide during unaudited actuals, but you're, you're going to see in a little bit the importance of us starting to cover this throughout the year. What I wanna highlight here, if, if we look at the second line there, that's our, that's our charter school. That's our advanced learning academy, or ALA. What you see is a deficit of about $2.2 million in 24, 25. And that leaves them with an ending fund balance of less than $1 million. So that's concerning. So if we've got a significant deficit, and the ending fund balance is actually less than what that deficit was, that's, that's a red flag, and we're really going to need to keep our eyes on ALA. We're going to need to make sure that they are, just like the non-charter schools, that they are right sized. Because otherwise, the general fund will need to make contributions. And that, that is something that we really can't afford to do. So we're really gonna keep our eye on that. Right below that, you see our child development fund. That's for early childhood education, that's Fund 12. And what you see there, you do see an, an increase in fund balance of about $1.2 million. But it's important to note that they received quite a bit of one-time funding in 24, 25. So that leads us to, once again, put a red flag there and say, well, if, if they, if they have that increase because of one-time funds, maybe there's really a true or a structural deficit. They do have some significant fund balance. They've got about $5.7 million, $5.8 million. So it's not like the general fund will have to be making contributions anytime soon, but we are gonna keep our eye on that. And right below that is, is kind of a, a good point of light. And that is our, our child nutrition. I was seeing Josh up until now, but he disappeared. I was gonna give him some props. So up until 24, 25, child nutrition, the deficit was more pronounced. It was in excess of $1 million. Last year, the deficit was only a quarter million, which means they're getting their participation up. They're getting their expenditures under control. And that is a sigh of relief, because that means the general fund is not in danger of having to make contributions to our child nutrition funds. So those are the three funds that we're keeping our eye on. And we will, because of, because of what I pointed out, especially on ALA, it's something that we're going to be highlighting in our interim presentations. It brings us back to our budget timeline, and we, you know, we went through where we, where we, where we were. I do wanna talk about a couple of things that we're going to be doing. So I mentioned earlier that our auditors will be coming in and doing an audit based on unaudited actuals. But the other audit that's gonna be taking place is highlighted here in green. So what we're going to be doing is doing a, a deep dive into supplies, services, and capital expenditures in 24, 25 and in 23, 24. And we're gonna be looking for patterns. We're gonna be looking for patterns between the years. We're gonna be looking for patterns within the year. We might be, be looking at some benchmarks and comparing ourselves to statewide and countywide averages. So it's gonna be a deep dive, and that's in order to promote even more transparency, transparency in our budget. And after we complete that analysis, we will have an external auditor come in and validate the analysis, and, and just, just to make sure that we have complete transparency on our budget. And the other timeline, of course, is our budget discussion timeline. So here we are on the bottom part. October 7th, that is the town halls. We have this one, as well as an online town hall tonight. That is the last of the, the presentations and, and sharing of information related to unaudited actuals. But come first interim, we're going to be having in December and January more sessions. And then for second interim in, in March. So we're gonna continue to share all of those efforts.
And we do have a few questions.
So how much time do you think we want for our breakout? 15?
Yes.
So maybe five minutes of questions?
Yes, five minutes of questions. How can we, as parents, find out how much we pay for assessments, exams, evaluations? And I think it's, está en referencia a un alumno en la evaluación o todas las evaluaciones que damos. She would like to know, she would like to know both. In general, for assessments, how much we pay to have kids assessed? And then she also wants to know for kids that are in special education, how much is it for that specific, like, assessment when we're assessing a child for their specific needs?
So that could be something that, that could be one of the things that our, that our finance teams will be looking at in that second audit that I talked about, doing that deep dive. We can call out, we can, we can have as a category assessments. It's not something I know off the top of my head.
They wanna know, yeah, I'll repeat it. She wants to know if, when a child is evaluated, and they have to, the parent isn't in agreement, and they have to be reassessed, could we look at if those costs could be then placed out the district for the additional assessment that needs to be done? And she's, if we could look into it in the future?
We could look into it.
We'll look into it and what the cost would be? Okay, and then, a question about who, when you're talking about certified personnel, who is it that you're talking about, like on the pie chart? Just an explanation of who those salaries belong to.
So certified salaries include salaries for teachers, counselors, nurses, and certain mental health professionals, psychologists and, and other. I think that's a, a pretty inclusive list of us certified.
Okay, and why don't we get an outside company for landscaping? Couldn't we save more money? That was the comment.
Actually, it is, it is almost always more inexpensive to do things in-house. And we have a pretty robust grounds department, which includes some tree trimming abilities. For districts that don't have any tree trimming functionality, by way of example, you're, you're paying a premium to have outside companies come in and do tree trimming. So for, for the most part, it's, it is, it is a better financial decision to do things in-house.
And due to low enrollment, is SAUSD considering closing any schools that are not meeting like minimum student enrollment requirements?
So, that's an interesting question. So in terms of closing schools, the district is, is absolutely evaluating that. But that process is prescribed by Assembly Bill 1912, which was passed a few years ago. And it is a long process. So the decision to close a school is not made simply based on low enrollment. That, that Assembly Bill 1912 doesn't really allow for that. It, it, you, we need to go into a lot of deep analysis and look at programs, and look at demographics, and look at where students are, and look at SEQA implications. So California Environment Equality Act, look at the SEQA implications of closing a school. So the short answer is the district is looking at that. The, when we're ready to, to move forward, the first item that you're going to see is, you'll, there'll probably be a formation of a committee. There will be a resolution that establishes AB 1912 metrics. So what are the metrics that we're gonna be using? That's the first time that you'll, you'll see that. And it, I'll, I promise you, it will be an incredibly transparent process.
And why do we have a charter school that has higher spending than the rest of the schools?
I, I, I don't know if the charter school has higher spending. It, this could just be, what's happening with them, the fact that they have an ending fund balance of, of under $1 million. That could just be a function of them not having a big fund balance. The deficit that they're incurring is similar to the deficit that the non-charter school is incurring. It's just they have less fund balance right now.
Okay, and then, this had gone along with the other one, with the question, and you kind of answered it, but I wanna make sure we address it. Are there risks to closing down schools? And are we looking at those risks when we make those decisions?
There are risks, and, and, and a lot of the risks are public perception that, you know, that we're, that we're harming students. But the reality is, and I've, I've gone to a number of, of sessions at conferences about this. And if you look at the, the districts that were successful in this effort, the message that you keep hearing from them over and over and over again is that this was not a financial decision. It was, it was not a decision related to enrollment. Those things certainly were part of the discussion. But it was, it was to better serve students. So i- if you've got small schools, sometimes there's combo classes. And combo classes in and of themselves aren't necessarily bad. But there are definitely more combo classes. You don't, you don't necessarily have the efficiency with a small school to properly serve students. So when you consolidate schools, you are better serving students. And I am not making this up. If you look at the districts that were successful, that really engaged in, in meaningful discussion with their communities about that, that is the message that keeps coming out over and over and over again, that school consolidation, school closure is not about low enrollment, it's about improving programs.
And with that, we wanna make sure we have enough time for our small groups. So I'm gonna ask my team, if you guys can get to each of the tables, so we can make sure that we're charting. I'm gonna need, I think, two people at this table. I have Maritza and maybe Evelyn, if you can come over here. And now what we're gonna do is we're gonna provide time for you to give input, keep asking your questions on the charts. Oh, and you're gonna be answering this question. What do you want the finance teams?
Well, let me jump in.
Okay, go ahead.
So you heard me talk about that, that other audit that we're gonna be doing, where the finance team is gonna be diving into numbers, and then we're gonna have an external auditor come in. At the same time, that finance team's gonna be doing first interim analysis. So the question that we're posing is, what do you think that the finance team should be focusing on? So we heard assessments, that's, that's a, that's something good. What are some of the subcategories that you want called out in this analysis for the, you know, to, to help the district?
And if we weren't able to get to your question, and that's what you want the auditors to look at? Like suggestions of areas where we want to look at our finances? How much money we're expending, what revenues we're using for it? Please make sure you get those questions down. So I'm gonna ask Gabby for that table to chart with Valeria, Valeria and Gabby, and then Evelyn and Maritza right here. And then, I was gonna call on Maria Corona, right here at this table, if you could bring a chart. And we'll get Raul to help and support you as well. And so the question is, what do you want the finance teams to focus on during their first? first interim analysis and expenditure audit analysis? And Ron gave the perfect example of assessment. Someone else had a question about how much does it cost for school police? Someone asked about school lunch programs. They want to know more about how much money we get for that program. So make sure that in your small group, that's what you're getting on the chart, and that's what you want them to analyze, that you'd like for them to look at. So we're going to go ahead and get started, and you're going to have approximately 10 minutes.
And just a reminder, if we did not get to your question as well, if you're not able to get to it on, on the, on the boards, we're collecting every single question, we're collecting every single statement that's been written down. And we're going to have a budget website like we did last year, where we address a lot of these issues. So the most commonly asked questions, the most up-to-date budget information will be on our district budget website that we'll be launching later on.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to go ahead and get started, and you're going to have about 10 to 15 minutes to get on the chart paper, everything that you want listed for what you would like our finance teams to focus on during their analysis. Thank you.